Good evening. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this September 6th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and would ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. And would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our Sergeant at Oros tonight is Lieutenant Daniel Batches. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items. We have three zoning petitions. There's an item related to the purchase of property, an item related to boards and commissions, as well as a need for a closed session to discuss another property acquisition. The zoning petitions are listed as public hearings, and when the public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I will close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. If there is opposition, the proponents and the opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. and again tomorrow at 9 o'clock p.m. Copies of our agendas, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online on the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, we have a little bit of sad news tonight, as we want to acknowledge our Assistant City Clerk. This is her last meeting. Mary Beth Too is moving down to Wendell, North Carolina, to be the city clerk, I believe, in that area. (APPLAUSE). Mary Beth, you never say anything other than call the roll. Would you like to say something tonight?
Thank you.[225.12][225.12](LAUGHTER).
Well, we certainly greatly appreciate your service over the past three and a half, four years, and you did a great job keeping us going, keeping us on time, and sending out the notices that the agendas are all available on our laptops. So, thank you so very much, and best of luck. Great, thank you. May we have the first item, please?
Item Z1, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem Incorporated from RS9 to RM5-S. Property is located on the south side of Somerset Drive, west of Sparkling Place, and the east side of Lockwood Drive, north of Caraway Lane, located in the southwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the June 6, 2022, and August 2, 2022, city council meetings. A request to continue this item to the October 3, 2022, city council meeting has been received for this item.
I recognize Councilmember Monday for motion.
I move to continue W-3529 until the city council's meeting on October 3, 2022.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, and anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Item Z2.
Item Z2, public hearing on zoning petition of Allred Investment Company from GO-S to GO-S. Property is located on the southern terminus of Plaza Rest Road, north of Vest Mill Road, located in the southwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Now, the petitioners are here. If there are any questions. Seeing no one in opposition, I'll close the public hearing. Again, recognize, Councilmember Monday.
I'll make a motion and then ask for a brief presentation.
Why don't you get, let's get the presentation first. Okay. Murphy, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Yes, shown on, shown in front of you is the subject property, shown off of Healy Drive. It does have some frontage along Vest Mill, but there is no proposal for a connection to Vest Mill. The property is already zoned GO-S for offices. The proposal is to add a couple childcare uses to the existing site. There'd be a little bit of site modification with some parking, but for the most part, everything else will remain the same. This is what the subject property looks like from the aerial photo. Again, the highlight, the subject property highlighted in yellow. These are just some of the images. This is looking at the subject property from Plaza West Road. This is looking at the adjacent property to the north, and this is the adjacent property to the east, which is the KNW. This is adjacent property to the west, across Plaza West Drive, other office uses. Again, the subject property is shown in the area plan for office use. They are proposing a GO-S office request, just adding some additional uses for child daycare center. This is what the site plan would look like. They are removing an existing cross-connection to the KNW site, but they are re-establishing one along the south. Again, there is no connection to Vest Mill Road, so they'll have an interconnectivity to the KNW site, as well as their driveway to Plaza West Drive. Again, the rezoning is in keeping with the goals of legacy and the Southwest Suburban Area Plan update, and the request would only add the uses of child day, childcare drop-in and child daycare center. This was heard by the planning board after August 2022 public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition. The planning do, the planning board did recommend unanimously to recommend approval of this request, and again, the site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Any questions of Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and Councilmember Monday.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3541.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Item Z3.
Item Z3, public hearing on site plan amendment of Brookstown Development Partners LLC for multifamily development in a PB-S zoning district. Property is located at the southwest corner of West Second Street and Brookstown Avenue, located in the northwest ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Again, the petitioners here. If there are any questions. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and we'd recognize Councilwoman McIntosh.
Mayor, since this is merely adding an additional story on top, and it was approved unanimously at the planning board, I'm just going to go ahead and motion it in.
Please.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3542.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilwoman McIntosh. Be a great addition to that area with the additional floor there. All right, item Z4.
Item Z4, resolution authorizing the purchase of property in support of the city's affordable housing objectives, in addition to the provision of workforce housing with a primary focus on home ownership.
Recognize Ms. Tony. Would you like to make a brief comment on this one, if possible, or?
Marla.
Marla Newman, yeah. Director of our Community Development Department.
Good evening, Mayor Joins. Mayor Protem Adams, members of the council. Marla Newman, Community Development Director. Before you is a resolution in support of moving forward with the purchase of 22 acres of land located in the general area of Klein Street and Lion Street. This was brought to you previously for the use for both affordable housing, as well as other housing types, in consistency with the new affordable housing program that you all recently adopted in June. With this purchase, then, we will begin the work of doing research for what ultimately will be the highest and best use of the property, although, as said in the, in the item, that the primary focus would be on home ownership. We do recognize that the size of the property would envision multiple types of housing, both ownership and potentially some rental. Again, as you recall, the needs that were mentioned in the housing needs assessment were speaking towards our needs for rental housing, so we would contemplate that there would be some level of rental, but the primary focus would be on home ownership. And I'm happy to answer any vision of questions.
Any questions, Ms. Newman? Ms. Larson.
Yes, well, I'm very pleased to see home ownership as a priority. Thank you for adding that provision. Could somebody tell me roughly the 437, 600, where that money's coming from and how much money is left in that pot?
So, we would be looking at using bond funds primarily as the source of funding for this particular type of purchase.
So, how much?
And monies were allocated in our 2018 bond funds for acquisition and site prep.
We have, we have been, we have been buying some property recently. How much money is left in that fund? Do you have any idea?
We have roughly about a million dollars, including this.
Including this amount.
So, we're, we're about coming to the end of what we can do acquisition-wise.
We're spending about half of it tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is a great buy, I think, by the way. We, the property owners agreed to take the appraised value rather than their asking price, so I think I'm excited about this, and I will are, to get another 22 acres for our affordable housing initiatives. So, I recognize our Mayor Protem, if maybe she'd like to make the motion on this one.
Yes, I would, and then I'd like to make a comment, please.
Absolutely.
I move that we approve item Z4, 22-0511.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Again, I always have to keep rewinding the tape, that our strategic planning vision is housing. I know we have a lot of needs in our community, but again, we're, we're under the bus, basically, with 15,000 to 16,000 units down, and the census says we have over 250, 2,000 people, which we probably got more like close to 260,000-plus people in the city. So, again, I thank the staff, community development, and everybody in the council, and the mayor, for staying true to what we said we were going to do, when we voted unanimously for housing to be our focus. I know it seems to people that we're buying up land. Well, we have the, the plots and properties that the city already owns, unfortunately for foreclosure and other deals, but we cannot allow properties, if we are able to buy them in the city, to be gobbled up by developers and others who would raise the price of whatever it is they're going to build, and make home ownership or rental, housing for workforce, middle income, market rates, rent, and everything else. I think it's part of our responsibility to ensure that we stay with the focus that housing is a priority for the city of Winston-Salem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and certainly, we will be partnering with the private sector to leverage our dollars as far as we can stretch them, hopefully to long ways to get some additional housing. All right, thank you, Ms. Newman. We do have a motion and second. All those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z5.
Item Z5, Mayor Joins' recommendation for reapportments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Gail Anderson, Brenda Diggs, Mark Donegan, Brian Healan, Dr. Michael P. Wakeford, and Melissa Vickers, all's with term expiring March 2025.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. This is a really hard-working committee, as you know, and these folks have really done a good job, so we're glad to see them reappointed for that. We have item Z6, please.
Item Z6, closed session.
We do have a need to go into closed session to discuss another property acquisition, and I'd recognize Councilwoman Cipio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-3181A5 to provide instructions to staff regarding the acquisition of approximately 34 acres located at 3420 Old Greensboro Road and owned by the North Carolina Community Development Initiative Capital, Inc., currently known as Institute Capital, Inc., for statutory-permitted mixed-use development, including but not limited to affordable housing, under the city's housing initiative.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, of going to closed session. All those in favor, please indicate with voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. We will now go into closed session. I would ask the audience, if you would, please excuse the city council and myself. I would ask the audience, if you would, please excuse the city council and myself.